Good evening, everyone. Tonight is the Town Council Special Meeting, Tuesday, February 11th, 2020. On the agenda -- oh, is that the place?
Is it on the agenda?
No. All right. Stand for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so the item on the agenda tonight is the presentation of the 2021 Town and Board of Education Budget. So just so we're kind of clear on everything, so tonight it will just be a conference. So as council members, we're just here to listen. So there'll be no questions, there'll be no bad people tonight, we can actually listen to the presentation that's going on, and then we can obviously have questions that we'll have down the road, we can address them down the road for tonight, that's all there is. All right, so Carl?
So first budget under this new form of government. So this process, we've now taken the first selectman's budget and Board of Finance budget processes are now fused into one. So you're going to see both sides of the budget tonight, it's not just going to be focused on expenditures, you're going to look at revenues, you're going to look at forecasts for mill rate, you have to have the full picture to understand what the proposed budget that you have. So the proposed budget is in the town side of the budget, capital improvements, debt service, and Board of Education, all fused into one document. This is your budget book, which includes departmental summaries, a budget message that gives you budget analysis, and discussion of the themes that went into the budget, and there's a calendar also in the front to remind you of the budget review schedule. So the budget is, has to be balanced. The budget is going to be more than numbers. By its nature, there has to be numbers in there as part of the financing plan, but it also sets priorities for the town going forward. It has to respond to external and internal pressures put upon the community. So what you have in what we're going to go through tonight, and then over the next four evenings of budget reviews, is looking at allocating scarce resources. Scarcity creates competition, and then by result, choice. So what you've got in the budget book is one set of choices, one set of priorities, that comes from my review of the budget, my discussions with the department heads, to give you a spending plan. It includes the best information available at this time. We are early in the budget cycle, so we've got some numbers that are in this budget that are pending further refinement coming out of professional services such as insurances and the like. So in terms of theme, I tried to look at what would be, what's an overarching theme in trying to put together the first budget under this form of government, and really it's a focus on sustainability, not sustainability in terms of green initiatives, which is usually where sustainability's been taken, but it's really trying to get to a level of budget sustainability, looking beyond just the short term, a one-year, two-year window, and trying to look at longer-term, longer-visioned issues facing the town and its fiscal stability. So what you've got is starting to move forward with trying to lay a path for predictable budgeting, transparency, and fiscal discipline. On the transparency side, this will be the last time you look at a budget like this. Next year, you will get a much better budget book with much more detail that gives you better information to make more informed decisions than this format. Didn't have the luxury of time to try and put together a better format, but as was pointed out to me, Rome wasn't built in a day, so we'll get you there. But this will be the last year, so if you're particularly tied to this format, I hate to break it to you, but we'll change it. Difficult decisions went into the proposed budget. Some people think that cutting the budget is the easiest thing in the world. This is, this was not an easy process, it's a very difficult process to try and lay out a spending plan that makes sense. And difficult decisions are going to lay ahead over the course of our evenings, as you deliberate to try and come up with a fair budget and fair tax rate. In summary, the total budget expenditures for the entire budget, town and Board of Education included, is proposed to increase by 3.78 percent. The tax rate is only proposed to increase by 1.92 percent. There's a disconnect between expenditures and where the revenues are going based on three factors. First is a one-time adjustment in educational cost sharing as an added revenue to the town, which I'll go over in more detail. Appropriation from fund balance for capital expenditures, which I'll also go over in detail, and local growth in the grand list, which has been higher than what we've seen in the past. Going through the different components of the budget, the town government line is the operating budget for the town, that has a proposed increase of $689,000 or 4.3 percent. The Board of Education on their operating budget has a proposed increase of $610,000 or 1.85 percent. Debt service, you'll notice that there's a swing between the amortization table for debt service attributed to the town and debt service attributed to the Board of Education. The town side of debt service is proposed to increase by 9.7 percent based on bonds that have already been authorized to be issued. Capital improvements, Board of Education came in seeking $34,000 in additional funding for capital improvements, taking the total up to $433,000. The town is in at $1.3 million for its capital improvement requests. So perhaps new to some of you is a discussion of financing the budget, and I want to walk you through the process I went through to come up with where I think the mill rate could come in at. So generally, state law limits where local governments can go to get their revenue sources. Either you're reliant on the state to provide funds to you in grants and aid, you have a reliance on the property tax, and that's about it. You've got permits and fees, which are other sources, but they're always dwarfed by the other two. We've got good growth in the grand list this year, albeit before the Board of Assessment Appeals has taken its review, you're in at over 1 percent growth, which is higher than what you've seen in the past several years. That growth generates an additional five, over $500,000 in additional revenue to the town, assuming the current mill rate, which helps create some of that disconnect between tax rate growth and expenditure growth. State aid is used as a tool to limit the size of the property tax increase. This is the second year of the state's biennium, so what normally happens this time is that the governor comes in with budget adjustments. So when the governor presented his adjustments to the second year of the biennium earlier this month, his statement was no cuts to municipal aid. And that should be clarified for the purposes of this document to say, no new cuts to municipal aid. The aid formulas that are driving what Clinton receives and other communities that fall into the same basket as us, there are, those aid formulas are already trending downward and reducing overall state aid to Clinton. Reductions in state aid because it's used to offset tax increases puts a pressure on the other side of our revenue stream to have the property tax fill the gap where the state is pulling back its funding commitment to local governments. So this chart gives you, there's a lot to try and understand in this chart, and I want to spend a minute or two on it. This gives you the difference between what the state budget is for the larger grants and aid that go to Clinton, and then where the town's revenue assumption was. So it's important to look at this in two ways. First is that there is an increase, and that's that one-time adjustment to ECS that helps, help pull down the mill rate for the proposed year, but there's also a trend line. And really, you can see the difference between the funding programs is basically nothing until you get to ECS. So this time last year, there was a high degree of turmoil in the state, ECS was in a state of flux. As you can see, it's the single largest grant and aid program for Clinton, and single largest grant and aid program for just about every other municipality. Because it was in a state of flux, there were discussions of reduction, the Board of Finance at the time reduced and lowballed that number in order to try and insulate the town. It was a good decision to be made at that time, a lot of other municipalities were doing the same thing, trying to hedge against the uncertainty of what the state's budget process was going to be, which took longer than what the municipal budget setting process was. So when we go to the Governor FY21 column, this reflects his adjustments to the second year of the biennium, which for municipal aid was no cuts or no new cuts. This budget assumes the governor's number, which is what the governor's budget's normally been, which is the floor. And if the General Assembly adjusts the budget, it normally adjusts it upward rather than pulling away from what the governor's budget comes up with. As early as this morning, at a Connecticut Conference Municipalities meeting, there was discussions of new money floating around in Hartford where they might provide more money to municipalities. So what a difference a year makes when they're cutting pretty heavily and hitting municipalities, and then only to turn around and say the next year they're going to offer more. So that difference between the town FY20 and town FY21 shows a quarter million dollar increase in revenue to the town because we're going from an artificially low base at the Board of Finance installed to protect the town, to where we're at with the governor's budget being the floor for discussions. So that, that looks like a windfall to the town, but really, when you look at state FY20 to Governor FY21, you'll see that there's actually a reduction in education cost sharing grant by $263,000. So the state is pulling down what we will be receiving, which would normally put pressure on the mill rate. This year, because of that under-budgeting of the revenue, it looks like a windfall, but it's really just a one-time adjustment. Don't think that that's going to be the case next year. Next year, we should anticipate, what you see for FY21 would be a nice number to get, it's on a downward trend line. This is what the town has gotten for educational cost share, so you can see that it's heading in one direction, and that's not a positive direction. Fund balance is being used in the budget two particular ways. First is the assumption that a certain amount of fund balance will be used to provide property tax relief. The town has always done this, there has been an accounting of using a certain amount of fund balance in order to pull down and defer what the mill rate could be. New to this year would be allocating a specific amount of fund balance to go towards capital improvements. The budget is picking up the full cost of certain capital improvements, which is why the number looks higher than what you've done in the past. So the revenue is also being picked up to provide an offset to the, to the mill rate. I do want to point out the need to use, be mindful of where fund balance is at, and look long-term. Next year will be the year revaluation gets implemented, that will likely be the year where you're going to want to talk more about fund balance than this particular year. So I've given you that green box that says caution, so there's, that's my sustainability box for this part of the budget. I use green, and I would hope you would appreciate this, Eric, and acknowledgement of green initiatives. So, fund balance is a measure of fiscal flexibility when we're doing bond rating reviews. Town has issued a certain amount of debt, that debt has certain assumptions built behind it for what our bonds are going to be worth. You have a number of projects that were approved by statewide or townwide referendum to be also bonded, so there's anticipation of future bonding. So again, it's maintain, making sure we have that good fiscal flexibility, which assures us maintaining stability in our bond rating. And then, again, keeping that long-term focus on where we need to go, and making sure that we're using fund balance appropriately over time. Other revenue, interest income is expected to remain weak, we're in an artificially low interest rate environment. Permit and fee income is following basic historic trends. We have not taken up any of the other anticipated permit lines with the large projects that are being contemplated, just trying not to skew the budget, only to then have to pull those numbers down next year. And real estate conveyance tax is projected to be flat from the year prior. Town government expenditures, town budget is, town side of operating budget is proposed to be funded at $16.5 million, an increase of 689 or 4.24 percent. Going into this, I've already cut the budget by $426,000. So a certain amount of lifting has been done through my review. You need to understand a couple of factors in terms of what is shaping the town's operating budget. We've got an outside pressure with MIRA, the entity that handles our solid waste, increasing the tip fee that comes for waste leaving our transfer station, going up by $10 a ton. If you read the budget message I've given you, that entity would like to ultimately take that tip fee up to $140 a ton over time. That's clearly going to cause a problem on our end, and it's a topic of ongoing conversation for what role the state will play in helping MIRA adjust its organizational financing. Union negotiations, I've got the union negotiations, part one and part two, so it's a double whammy of union negotiations influencing the budget. Part one is that this budget is now realizing the cost of contract settlements that were approved, and having it reflect the retro expenses associated with those settlements that were recently achieved. So when you look at the line items, you may see a jump in personnel, that's just accounting for what had been approved already. Those contracts that we are now accounting for in the budget all expire at the end of this fiscal year. So part two is, we are back in negotiations all over again. So in preparing for new negotiations, salary line, while they are up, they also don't assume a rate, a general wage increase going into the new fiscal year. The only other increase that's accounted for is step increases, so it's, we will have to negotiate with the unions for what, whatever the wage increase will be for the fiscal year of this particular budget. Tried to give you an idea of putting the individual chunks of the budget into blocks that make a certain amount of sense, so this, this may be new to how you've looked at the budget in the past, I tried to create buckets that made a certain amount of sense, at least in terms of my budget review, to give you some, some cost center. So government administration, which is a lot of your town hall operations, has a 5.4 percent increase. Land use and development, which is a larger catch-all, is proposed to have a decrease. Protection and emergency, which is public safety and some of your code enforcement activities, has a 2.4 percent increase. Public works and facilities, which would include some of your utility expenses, has a 5.7 percent increase. Recreation and human services is less than 1 percent. The library has come in with a grant request from the town at 1.24 percent. And insurance and benefits, which includes all insurances, comes in at 6.68 percent. Trying to break it down and looking at the budget in a different fashion, personnel expense is the largest component of this budget. The town is a service organization, and as a service organization, we have to rely on people to deliver our product, it's not a manufacturing type operation. So when you look at personnel expense and professional services, those are really the line items that drive most of the direct service provision to the public, and also accounts for 80 percent of the budget. The other items, you can see there's increases, or there's a proposal for repair and maintenance to stay on top of what we have, general operating supplies, our technology investments, utilities and fuel is another larger chunk which keeps the lights on and allows us to have an environment to deliver our services. Capital, this is your historical capital funding experience, a little bit of variability in what you've done for capital funding from year to year, this is just the town piece of it. It looks like every other year, it's, it's up high and then it, then it drops down. To that sustainability point and predictability, my goal would be, over time, to kind of smooth this out a little bit, so that it makes a little bit more sense instead of this high level of variability, which really starts to undermine any sense of predictability coming out of the town's budget. This is, it's shock, then withdrawal, shock, withdrawal, so this needs to be reviewed and stabilized over time to get to some level of predictability in terms of how you're going to invest in the town's infrastructure. High priority items have been included in the plan, CEC has already done its review, I took into consideration their take on it, but then also made further revisions on my end. So there's two pieces in here that speak to that sustainability aspect. First is establishing a fire apparatus reserve. Fire department has life cycle to its apparatus, their equipment is not inexpensive, depending on what we're talking about, it's six figures to seven figures for a piece of fire equipment. Those aren't really items that should be funded with this shock and withdrawal, it really should be having a, basically a savings account built up over time. So creating a fire apparatus reserve allows you to have an account where you're putting in a fixed dollar amount, which then allows you, over time, to make sure you've got the cash in place to be able to finance those larger vehicle purchases. It also puts money in the budget to pay, to pay for paving, rather than bonding paving. This may be a reversal from prior history, but paving and giving yourself the flexibility of putting it in capital makes more sense than financing it over 20 years. The life cycle over a road is about 20 years, by the time you've paid off that road, you got to go back and take another look at it. So trying to put something in here that allows us to finance it more on a pay-as-you-go basis, as opposed to financing it over time and paying 2 percent or more as, as you roll on with, with how you address paving. Public works is going through a paving study now, which would allow us to prioritize roads and make sure we can hit roads in terms of what makes sense, but at least this is establishing a funding mechanism to pay for paving on a pay-as-you-go basis and avoid having that being a bonded expense. Debt service, speaking of bonded expenses, the trend on debt service is up, so the green box points out that we need to be mindful of what we're, what we're bonding and what the debt expense is going to be. As debt service grows, budget flexibility is going to be reduced. These are fixed payments, they are must-pays, so this gets to why in the capital plan, I'm looking to put things in there that inject flexibility on a pay-as-you-go basis rather than a fixed must-pay, which is going to lock up a larger chunk of the town's budget based on this growth curve. This also includes capital leases that, that the town has used to purchase vehicles and the like. That two is another policy that requires a review. I have not addressed that in this particular budget because it's, you've got legacy expense now associated with prior decisions in order to finance vehicles by way of a lease purchase, so you still are going to have lease purchase payments tied into your debt service budget. Comparing the budget, looking at expenditures from the adopted budget for the current fiscal year and the proposed budget for next fiscal year, the town's slice of the pie remains about the same, the debt service slice of the pie, about the same, education is a little bit smaller, capital improvements is a little, is a little bit larger. The revenue comparison is a little bit more of a difference here, and sorry for some of the labels overlapping themselves. Investments is about the same, permits and fees is about the same, and state aid is about the same. The tax slice of the pie is smaller because that use of applied fund balance is larger than what you've had in the past. So again, it's that demonstration of another source of funds pulling down where the taxes are projected to go. So the proposed mill rate, which needs to be part of this conversation, I understand the history of looking at the, just the expenditure side of things, but the budget has to be in balance, and you need to understand the other side of the equation. So the proposed budget would require a mill rate of 31.85 mills, that's a six-tenth of a mill increase, or 1.92 mills over the current mill rate of 31.25. This gives you a little snapshot of some recent budget history and the increases in where your mill rate has gone. So at one point in time, you had a 10 percent mill rate increase coming off of a reval year, and then smoothed out to, in the twos. So what you have proposed before you is a smaller increase in the mill rate than you've seen in recent history. The mill rate distribution, based on that proposed millage, education is, comes in at 18.69 mills, town administration, 1.18 mills, and you can see the slides for yourself. That capital and debt, so it's financing of, of those two slices of the pie, comes in at almost four mills. And this gives you a sample calculation based on what the assessor tells me is the average value of residential property in Clinton. So you have an average market value of about 300,000, 70 percent of that comes in at 210,000 as the assessment, which is the basis of taxation. Current mill rate of 31.25, that average taxpayer would have a $6,500 tax bill. With the proposed mill rate at 31.85 mills, their, but their tax bill increases to 6,688 or $126 increase. To put some context to what your budget reviews are going to be going forward, and it's mindful, purposeful budget review and cutting, we need to talk about what the value of a mill is, and then what the goalpost is going to be. So the numbers I've given you is, the value of a mill comes in at 1.56 million. Your, the way you impact the mill rate is cuts that generate one one-hundredth of a mill, so that's $15,600 roughly. That's the magic number for what you're cutting needs to total in order to be impacting the mill rate. So if you're not cutting at 15,600, you're not doing anything to address the taxpayer. If you're not cutting in that dollar amount, you're not impacting the mill rate, it's cuts for the sake of cutting, not cuts for the sake of trying to benefit the taxpayer. So in your reviews, I would be, point out to you that you really need to keep that number in the back of your head. That's the largest number that you should be focused on, is that's the one that means something to the taxpayer. In the example of the average taxpayer, that one one-hundredth of a mill reduction results in $2.10 reduction in their tax bill. This gives you an overview of how the average tax bill would be spent, so of that individual's $6,600 tax bill, $3,900 goes to education, is the single largest component of the, the town's budget. Town administration is 248, land use comes in at $38, public safety is in at $500 a year, public works is at 377, Parks and Recreation comes in at about $76 a year, the library is an $89 a year investment, and then that capital and debt component for debt service and future capital needs is $823 a year. So, good budgets give the Town Council an opportunity to set priorities and direction for the town, and after tonight, this stops being my budget, it starts being your budget, stops being a staff-driven document, and becomes a policy document for the town for the direction that will be set going forward, and what are going to be your community priorities as it's reflected in the spending plan for the town. So this, before I totally hand it over to you, I do need to hand the budget over to Board of Education to give you their overview of it, but that's what you've heard from me tonight. You have a written review that mirrors some of the concepts that were in the presentation, if you want to read that at your leisure. I have copies of the presentation for you. Presentation for your review for the consideration. Mike, and with that, I will hand it over to Chairman of the Board of Education.
Thank you, Carl. I'll change seats.
Oh, there we go. Exactly. So let's do this. Can you go over there? It's right there. Close them off. Just real. There we go. Ready? I'm ready. All right. Yeah. Everybody ready? Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to present tonight. I'm the Superintendent Marion O'Donnell, and with me is our Board of Education Chair, Erica Geldman. Tonight, we're here to present our budget. We've just shared with you the budget book, as well as a copy of the presentation, and we'll kind of highlight some of the areas for you in the budget tonight. So I want to start, because tonight is about sharing this information initially, and then allowing you some time to take a look at it, and then a follow-up workshop where we'll be able to answer questions and address additional information that you may desire as members of the town council as you're trying to make decisions. So I'd like to indulge, if you'd indulge me for a minute, I want to just quickly walk through the budget book and what's contained within it. Some of you have seen it before, some of you have not, but Erica and I want to make sure that you know where the information is, so that as questions come up over the next week or two weeks, you'll be able to find it, or you can always send us an email and we'll make sure that we provide that information when we present on the 20th. So the book is broken into several sections. The background section is in purple, it's color-coded, so the top line on the page tells you what section you're in. The purple is really our introductory letter from Erica and myself about the budget, gives some information about the members of the Board of Ed, our mission statement and priorities, and then the budget timeline. So it's really more informational. The orange section is an important one, that there are often lots of questions about. So in the orange section, we provide demographic information about our enrollment and staffing. We include on page five our projected enrollment. We contract with Nesdeck, which is an education development company that does enrollment projections for districts, and we get it updated each year. So this is the most updated enrollment projection, followed by some information about class sizes as they will exist. And then the next couple of pages are kind of blue and light blue. So if you get to page eight and on in the rest of that section, eight through 14, this lists all of our staffing in the district. So oftentimes, there's questions about changes over time, or questions about how many teachers, and this includes all of our certified staff, as well as our non-certified staff. And it's something that the board started tracking, really in my first year. It's always in the budget book, but we started to display it this way, both for the board to take a look at, and to make sure that we were sharing information that could answer questions that often come up. The next section, if you look at nothing else, I'd encourage you to look at the section on request by object. And as you saw, Mr. Kilduff tonight, kind of put things into buckets and general categories and show you how much of the budget that represents, or what the increases might be in those areas. That's what this section really does, and I think will be helpful. The first part of it gives you an explanation of each of the buckets or objects that the entire line item budget is built into. So if you read through that, it gives you what's in that bucket, and then it gives you a section on what's happening related to the costs in that bucket. And that is true for each of our objects. And then when you turn to page 19, it gives you a table of the objects. So you can look at 19 and then reference back to why it's increasing or decreasing. I'll note two columns here. The last column is the percent of total budget that that particular object makes up. So as you look at that table, certified salaries make up 48.5% of the entire Board of Ed budget. The column next to it shows you how much it's changing this year. So there's really two representations in the table when you look at it. And I'll be talking about these buckets tonight in the slides, and so you'll see some more detail in the slides as well, to try and highlight, looking at the budget from this level. Okay? The next section is the request by cost center. This is the nitty-gritty detail of every single line item in the budget. The first page on page 21 gives you each of what we call cost centers. Each of the schools, as well as our departments, have their own budgets that are broken out by individual line items. And so you see the summary on page 21, followed on 22 with some descriptive notes that correspond to these line items on that page. So if you're reading a line item, such as the custodians line, or the custodial overtime, if you look up above, there's a little note that explains it. So we don't explain every line item, but sometimes if there are key changes, or something that you might not otherwise know is contained in that line item, there's a note up above. Okay? And as you dig in, these are all the line items that are pulled out and gathered into these objects. So we're going to look at it in a more macro view, but all of the detail is here. And then for each one of these line items, we have even further detail about what makes up those numbers. That's not in here. I have it if there are questions, but we really do provide you each of the line item numbers that are in the budget. And then the last section is district information, and this is often, I would say frequently asked questions, as it relates to components of the budget. Often, it's major drivers. The first page are tuition, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit tonight, but it gives you some detail about where those costs are coming from. It includes grants, so you've heard Mr. Kilduff share a lot of the grant revenue information related to ECS and what comes into the town. We also represent grants that we might receive on the education side, and some descriptions and information within this section. We have information on page 53 on per pupil expenditures over time and what that means, capital expenditure, Board of Education debt service over time. And all of that information is really in response to our Board of Education wanting to be able to look at these pieces, as well as questions that have come up when we've presented to the town boards in the past. And so we've put it all here, and we track it, and make sure we present it both to the town, and it's also on our website for anybody who wants to take a look at our budget. So there's a lot in here. Again, if I emphasize, I would have you take a look at the request by object in particular section. I think it gives a good macro view of the drivers of our budget, but you have an idea of what's contained in here, and you can reference it along the way. So the last piece of the district information section is probably the most important piece for us as a school, as a Board of Education, and that's our Clinton Public Schools Strategic Plan that began in 2018 and will take us through the end of next year. And so I'm going to let Erica talk a little bit about that briefly, about our plan and the Board of Ed, because as Mr. Kilduff said to you tonight, this is not my budget, this is our Board of Ed budget. So I presented the superintendent's budget early in January pieces, and then on January 23rd, I believe it was, the Board of Ed then looked at it, they did some workshops and discussions, and then adopted this on February 3rd, 2020. So this is the Board of Ed education budget, and while I'm going to present it tonight and some of the pieces, this is the work that was done by the Board of Ed, and we're going to have Erica just briefly talk about that before we jump into some of the numbers.
Thank you, and thank you for having us. Again, also, as Mr. Kilduff was saying, you know, education is probably the ultimate people-driven business. We're all about our staff, and we're all about a staff that's working toward a collective vision, that we really, it was very critical for us that it reflected the priorities and perspectives of our constituency. This work is only worth doing if it's actually reflecting what the people of our town want to see from their educational system. So when we're, when the board is sitting around the table making budgetary decisions, we're always kind of coming back to this lens of, does this meet our mission? Does this meet the priorities that we've set out for ourselves? If it does, then we have further discussion about how do we fit that in, how we make decisions, how do we fund those things going forward? If it does not, then we, you know, honestly, kind of file it away for another day, when we can have, when we can have a conversation that is more fitting what the town wants and what the town is able to sustain. When we're doing our work, we always kind of drive, the first two priorities are really kind of our driving influences. The first one is to provide personalized learning opportunities, to develop engaged and reflective learners who can apply their learning. That means, that truly means what learning is meaningful to them. So it's not about a college admission stat, it's not about a standardized test score, it's about what those kids, what their passions are, what goals they set for themselves, what goals their families have for them, and how we can help them to reach those goals. The second is to, priority number two, is to ensure academic achievement and learning for all students in all disciplines. Again, this does not mean making sure that our kids are always getting into the best colleges, or that they have, you know, that they're, I don't know, trailblazers, or test scores, or things like that. It really means what are they moving forward? Are they moving forward on a pathway that is meaningful for them? That is our job and our commitment as a district, and we really, when we're making determinations, because there is limited funding, when we're making determinations about where we need that funding to go, these are the two priorities primarily that we have at the forefront of our decision-making.
So the other three priorities, three, four, and five, really do support those decisions around the academic experience and the learning experience that our students have as they move through each of our schools in our district. And I do want to highlight priority five, because I think that has been something that the board has really worked on in the last three years, and most of you are aware of some major decisions that we made to reorganize the district, to evaluate the decision around our enrollment and our school facilities, and the eventual decision the board made a year, a little over a year ago, to close Pearson and return it to the town. And that was a major decision that caused reorganization in our elementary school and our middle school, and some major moving pieces, but it did result in efficiencies that are represented, I think, in the story that we're sharing in this budget this year that we're bringing forth to you. So that priority is always at the core of the decisions we're making, so that we can emphasize priority one and two. So let's jump into the budget. Clearly, you know there are three components to it. We're going to spend the most time on operation, but you heard a little bit about the capital budget, I have just one slide on that, and then a little bit about debt service, you heard that from Mr. Kilduff tonight. So in talking about our operation budget, there are, I'm going to do it from that object level, those buckets, although all of that detail is in there. But rather than just to look at it in terms of an instructional supply account, and here's how much it's going up, we really wanted to start by looking at what our goals and considerations were, as well as our investments. Because the budget needs to tell a story of how our money is being spent towards our strategic goals and priorities, and towards meeting those first two priorities. So really, as we got started as an administrative team and with the board, it really was to make sure we were moving forward with the priorities set out in our plan. And those really are around the areas of curriculum, the experiences that kids have in the classroom, and then the ultimate achievement and learning that's accomplished. We also wanted to make sure that the restructuring that we did at our middle school and our elementary school was well-supported after implementing in year one. Rather than dismantling, we wanted to make sure that we were moving forward and supporting the structures that really are working well. And then, as always, maybe that should be on top, is controlling and containing costs as best we could. So there are some investments in the budget, and I pulled it out this way, so this PowerPoint becomes a little bit of a resource as well, as you're looking through the budget, because you'll see some line item increases or object increases. But ultimately, our focus has been in math and in literacy. And at Joel School, this past year, we implemented a new math program in grades K through 5, so Joel, and then one grade at Elliott. As we move into next year, we're focused on that development of early literacy skills, decoding, we have some money to support some new instructional materials in the early grades that will really ensure that our kids are reading at grade level by grade three. And that's kind of the standard benchmark. If kids are behind in grade three in reading, they're going to continue to struggle. And so we're really focused on that early literacy piece and making sure that the diversity of our students who come to us are truly ready by grade three, and they're ready to read to learn. And that's key for us. In addition, we do have a small amount of money to round out our leadership team at Joel. Again, there's two additional, we started this last year with the restructure, we're looking to add two grade-level leaders. That's a stipended amount, it's a small amount, but it's a critical part to our curriculum and instructional approach at the elementary, to ensure that our teachers are all working in the right direction to implement the initiatives we have. And then lastly, there's a component of literacy software, again, focused on allowing kids to access and using our technology resources effectively. At Elliott, we also have some investments. In addition to our K-5 math has been an area of weakness, relative weakness in our assessment scores and in student achievement, and that has been a focus for the last three years. So in addition to the implementation in grades K-5 for math this year, we are looking to implement next year the companion math program for grades 6 through 8, so that our students will have that strong curriculum all the way through. In addition, in our curriculum renewal process, we've looked at social studies, there were some new state standards that came out a couple of years ago, and we've gone slowly in making decisions, but we are looking to add some world study perspective in our middle school. Right now, we're very US history-centric, and that involves some materials in grade 7 to support that new curriculum. The world language and literacy instructional software, world language software is to avoid having to buy workbooks and instructional materials that way. We're leveraging the use of our Chromebooks, and now students will be able to access that online at a much lower cost than purchasing the consumable workbooks. So that was a cost savings, as well as an opportunity with our new technology at the middle school. And then the literacy instructional software is a program called Newzella that we're using, kind of piloting this year in middle school and beginning to implement middle school and high school. It can be used in all areas, provides strong, content-rich literacy materials that teachers can access, rather than just relying on textbooks that are older and not evolving and not new. And then lastly, as part of our continuing initiative in developing a really personalized curriculum that addresses the needs of all students in a classroom, we have a little bit of an investment of money in curriculum writing professional development for primarily social studies and English Language Arts. At the high school, you'll see some investment, again, instead of consumable vocabulary workbooks that are somewhat outdated, we're looking at a new vocabulary software program that in the long run will be cost-effective, because we're trading off the cost of those workbooks for the software cost here. That will be used in the English classes, and then that Newzella program I mentioned will be used in all of the subject areas at the high school. And then the second one, we implemented a new math course at the high school, a statistics course this year. John Madura, trained at UConn and received his PhD, he came back to us to work and has really developed this side of data analysis and statistics in our math program. He's proposing a little bit of investment in that introductory statistics course to make it a data and computer science-based statistics course. It's based on real-world data sets, and it has a connection to UCLA and a program that they're pushing out. So it's a little bit of investment in some materials to kind of create a better programming for our kids. The last one I have here is athletics, because when you look at that cost center, you may see some increases. We haven't invested, honestly, in our uniform replacement cycle, we've had to put that on hold at different times. So you'll see a slight increase in the uniform line item. We have four areas that we're looking to replace uniforms, they're all beyond what our normal replacement cycle is, they have been physically examined, and they really are needed. It's not a large dollar amount, but it is something that's in there, and you may see. In addition, we've looked with our new athletic director, he's looked carefully at how we support the management of all of our athletic events. And many of you can imagine that in this day and age, making sure that everything's managed, the officials, the fans, the site itself, and that we protect our sites, our fields, the Morgan School, our gym, it's not a big dollar amount, but we've really restructured how we support those events to make sure that our staff, our students, our coaches, the officials, and our fans are in safe environments. And so you may see a slight increase in that. And so you may see a slight increase in that line item around officials and that that's related to this, to enhance that. And that's in coordination with police and the people that we have there on-site to make sure it's safe. There's a little bit of software that's used at, by coaches and athletes to improve their practice. And then our Morgan exercise room or weight room is used by our PE and athletic department. But what we found is that we're not probably supervising and maintaining that weight room in a way that provides strong access to our athletes and our coaches and support for that, as well as making sure that the investment is maintained and capped. So we have a stipend in our contract. For $2,700, we would have supervision in that weight room at each of the seasons to monitor and to support the coaches and the athletes. And you can imagine in a weight room, as a Board of Ed and a superintendent, the liability of either equipment or a student injury is something we needed to look at. So it's not a large amount, but it is an investment that we're putting into the budget. So currently, we're at a 1.85% increase. You've heard that from Mr. Kilduff. It's also in all of these materials. This pie chart really breaks it out by those objects I talked to you about. And the next couple of slides really show you what's increasing, what's decreasing, with a little bit of explanation. But this just gives you the emphasis, as you saw on the town side, that salaries and benefits really represent the investment. We are a people-driven business. Our students benefit from the amazing staff that we have working with them, and that's really where our investment lies. And if you look at the object by percent, you see that same thing. We're making our investment in people and then in some of the instructional support materials that give kids a really good experience in the Clinton Public Schools. So I'm not going to read each one of these, but what I've done is pulled out that object table, just as we saw in the last presentation, and tried to highlight where we have some increases. And I will highlight the ones that are bigger, obviously, where there's some question. The certified and non-certified salaries are represented here. I want to point out that the number of, the percent increase for non-cert really is because in the timing of settling some of those contracts, in particularly the terms of employment, that got settled in July. So last year, there were no increases shown in the budget, even though they were budgeted for in a separate place. So what's represented on those line items is really two years' worth of increases. And you'll see that as you go through the budget for those groups. And I tried to highlight that in the notes. Our teacher increase, percent increase is really adjusted based on some retirements, some hirings that, you know, were able to come in and we've had some savings there. But this budget does maintain our staffing levels this year. We've been reducing staff to adjust to enrollment and our restructure. This year, we're proposing basically a level staffing going forward into next year. I guess I want to just point out quickly, the repairs and maintenance object is up a lot. Thirty thousand, forty thousand of that is really related to that instructional software I told you. So when you gather these objects, the software maintenance costs, which is to pay for the software licenses, they come into this object. So you might look at that and like, why do we have so much increase in the maintenance budget? His is about $10,000 or $12,000. The rest of it is split between the schools for those software resources. So it's kind of a misleading one. The other thing that often drives the budget is transportation. We are in, we are going to year three, I believe, next year of a five-year contract that went out to bid. And generally, that contract accounts for a 3% increase each year. We've been able to bring it under a little bit, mostly due to savings in fuel, because in closing the Pearson School, our buses used to do an extra trip between Elliott and Pearson. But now that they're not, we're able to kind of codify what that savings is in fuel costs, and that's offsetting the increase a little bit. The property insurance looks like a large number as well. That's really a two-year adjustment. In June, we were notified of about a $30,000 increase in insurance that we hadn't budgeted for when the numbers finally came in. And so that wasn't budgeted for in this budget. And then with the increase that they're proposing at this point for next year, that's, both of those are contained there. So they are big. That's our property liability. You know, I think I've heard wildfires in California last year is part of what drove it. There's some new statute of limitations on liability things for lawsuits and things against teachers. So there's a bunch of factors, I think, coming in, and the insurance industry is definitely passing on to the clients some of what they're taking in losses. The big number clearly stands out and is driving the largest part of our $600,000 increase is an increase in the tuition line. So in your book, I did point out the page. Basically, we are seeing an increase in the number of outplaced students. It's plus three at this point. One of those is a fairly significant cost to the out-of-district placement. And just, these are basically students who either come to us and are already in placements and they move into town, and so we're required to honor that. And it goes through an official planning and placement team process. Or students that really have needs that we cannot meet in district. And we've done a lot of work in the last several years to build in-district programs, and we've been able to reduce the number of students that we have to send out to programs that can provide the appropriate specialized instruction or support services for those students. But we are facing an increase in that, and that number's a big one. I can tell you, that number has changed. We've seen, you know, a net of an increase in three this year, but those increases occurred in this year's budget as well, partially through the year. So we've had to absorb that. It changes. We could have a family move in, we could have a family move out, and so it's a dynamic line, but it's a very expensive one that's very difficult to budget for. So our approach is, we budget based on everything we know at this point in time going into next year. If things change drastically, you know, we would, we would let you know. But at this point, it could go up next year and we would have to absorb it in our budget somehow. We don't budget for the what-ifs. We truly budget for what we know and what we expect will be the case next year. So that is the biggest driver of our budget, along with the salaries. But we have some great news. And Kristi Dunn, our second-grade teacher, is there to celebrate the great news, and those are the areas of decrease. So the biggest area of decrease, you can see the other numbers are a little lower, but the biggest area of decrease in our objects is in employee benefits. So we talked a lot in the last couple of years, the board made decisions to move to a high deductible plan three years ago. We began to move our groups. And last year, as we looked at our plan and where we were at, we, the board made a decision and we worked with our employee groups to move from the health insurance plan that we had to the State of Connecticut partnership plan 2.0. And in doing so, we had a tremendous amount of savings in this year, much of which we were able to adjust the budget before referendum last year. But we're seeing in year two, there's still a significant savings for us in our budget, even with an increase on the state side. We don't anticipate that to be the case next year. We're starting to level out, but we are seeing some residual savings in year two. So that's a nice offset to some of the increases that we're seeing. And the other things that we've contained that have helped keep our budget at the 1.85% I want to mention briefly our capital budget requests. In the book, there is a page towards the back that includes the capital budget that we presented to the capital expenditure committee, so they've seen this. But I wanted to just do a little bit of a summary of where those requests are. We have a couple of bonded roofing projects this summer, and then we have a shingle area of that Elliott back piece that is part of a building upgrade. But along with the roof projects, some of those HVAC unit replacements have to happen. And so that's part of why that number is as high as it is. But we group those things together. Technology, we have a dollar amount to continue with our initiatives, and then we have a little bit of money for equipment replacement. One of those pieces is to buy a snow removal machine that can be used at the high school and then could be used by DPW in the summer, working the fields. So as we look at our total budget request, you saw these numbers in the last presentation, but this is our three pieces together. Our operating, which I just spent a little bit of time in the book, gives you all of the information in detail, is at a 1.85% increase or $610,905. $610,905 capital, the slight increase. And then this year, our debt reduction is actually decreasing. That offset brings us to a total proposed Board of Ed request of 593, 319, or 1.63%. I need to thank everybody who was part of this, and I'll leave it at that. No Oscar or Academy Award speeches here, but there are a lot of people. This process starts in September, October. It actually probably starts as soon as the referendum passes and we start to go into the new year, as we look at things. But there's a lot of people who work really hard, and in particular, my Board of Ed, for the time and effort they put in to understand this, to push back, and to make good decisions for the children in Clinton. And normally, I finish with questions, but this year's cycle's a little different. And I've been told that I need to say that on February 20th, the workshop for the Town Council is the Board of Ed, and I'll be here and have answers to whatever questions or insight or conversations we need to have at that point. And in the meantime, if there are some big things that you want some clarification that night, if you share that with Mary, she can share it with Erica and I, and we can make sure we're prepared. But I think you'll find a lot of it in there, and we can explain some of the things that might not make sense to you as you, as you dig in a little deeper. So we appreciate the opportunity to share this with you tonight. I hope the materials, the book, and the PowerPoint serve as kind of good resources as you're looking at our budget and having to make some decisions about where we are as a whole in the community and what we can bring forward to the taxpayers. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann and Erica. And all Board of Ed, thank you all for all your helpful work. All right? We're good? Questions for attorney? Second?
Second.
Post, staying. Good night.
That's it. Good night, Gracie.
That's it.